I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's on like the Thursday. It's July 3rd this year and July 4th is a Friday, so a lot of people have that Friday off. So it has the potential for being a very, very big event this year, being the day before the 4th of July. And so what do we do? Like, do we add food trucks to that? Do we get off of Second Street and go to Oak? We've also got Country Stampede coming back this year, wanting to do, you know, wanting to be partnering with the community to do their welcome. So those two weeks in June and July are going to be packed. So anyways, if you have any questions, please ask. And other than that, I just was responding to the mayor who wanted to have some understanding of financial.
I know there might be a few questions or two, but thank you very much. What really prompted this was just prior to Thibault days, I had a business owner who reached out to me and commented about how since we had started moving the vendors onto Oak Street, and I know that was very controversial when we directed the parade differently a few years ago, but they had noticed a whole new energy in their life. And so this year, I happened to be down there both on that Friday evening as well as then Thursday until late mid-afternoon. And I was just, it seemed, the crowd seemed so much, much bigger than it had been in previous years. Not that we didn't have good crowds. And that kind of, you kind of basically confirmed my suspicions by saying that it increased, the traffic had decreased about 500%.
Yeah.
So it was good to see. Thank you very much for that information. And you might add too, you said that this application app that you have, also other departments can use it for targeting for other areas of concern.
Yeah, so I know Justin is interested in using it for Parks data and yeah, any department that would like access to it, I'll give them my access and, you know, let them use it. But like I said, I'm most excited from a travel and tourism perspective and getting our travel and tourism partners to understand and look at how this data can help them. The Ag Hall of Fame is one of those institutions that is so unique and different, and they know that special events are the way to, you know, help them, you know, be relevant in today's world. But, you know, they really only do a couple of special events a year, and it's hard because they're all volunteers and they don't have any staff. And so, you know, I'd like for them to see like the impact that they're making with some of their events and things like that. So, but yeah, I mean, it's great data. It's how, it's how big data is supposed to be used, I guess, and reliably and responsibly. It's kind of scary though, to see it too. So, but I'm excited to have it and if there's any way that I can help support our businesses with it, I'm certainly willing to do that.
A+.
Oh, thank you, former English teacher, Chris Wood. No typos in there, huh?
Thank you for all you do. You're incredible and such a big asset to our community and driving our own community members to get out of their homes to explore our great city. But just the work you do on the events, you know, Megan's putting out the barricades, she's setting up the tables, she's breaking down the tables, stacking chairs, picking up trash, putting out common consumption signage, putting out event signage, running the social media for it, checking in on the businesses, checking in on the vendors. So just thank you for showing such great leadership and encouraging others to follow suit. And I also just appreciate, you know, Parks and Rec really got involved with events this year. I know Nathan and Tatum were at a lot of events, setting up kid zones, and our Public Works has put to more work on trash pickup. So thank you to Public Works. And then our Fire and PD, one of the biggest feedback I get from community members is they just enjoy seeing Fire and PD just walking around, interacting. But I know a few times they've set up to hand out stickers or popsicles and different things like that. So I'm just really excited for 2025 to kind of reassess the last two years and just come together and see what we can do more for our community and our small businesses. So just thank you for all that you do.
Megan.
Yes, sir.
Got so easy.
Yes.
So since 1986, I've been making a right-hand turn off Front Street going up Oak.
Mm-hmm.
That's been, that's been a minute, right? And I, a lot hasn't changed, right? I mean, we painted some stuff, it was an IGA at the time when I moved in in 86 and it switched over and now it's no longer there and we've got great plans for that. You're doing a tremendous job and I, with hesitation, I kind of like this technology because it's like we're being peened, right?
Yeah.
It concerns me a little bit, but it is what it is. But let me, I want to put you on the spot because I know you can, you can handle this. Once, and you can go up Oak now, and as soon as you pass Kobe's, there's hardly nothing that Tap 24 may be open, maybe not, it's give and take. Our good friend Amy at Third Space, I think she tried being open, now this is in the evening time, this is right after noon, after 3, 4 o'clock, and then it starts, right in the evening comes. And so I think Amy tried being open on Mondays and Fridays, and I think it's important. Anyone that hears my voice should support our local restaurants. I think it's incredibly important. But let me ask you, Megan, what, what are we missing downtown that would create some extra, you know, energy or vibrancy and going up the street and as soon as you pass Kobe's? Do you have some feedback on that or some thoughts? Not to put you on the spot, but this is what you do, right?
Yeah.
Because we need this, right?
Yeah. I know that there's individuals in the community who are not happy about the apartments going in at 120 Oak. But that is a crucial project for this community because in order for any downtown to survive, if you look at any downtown that is progressing and moving forward and continuing to grow, there's got to be some component of living and living in your downtown. So you're, in the next two years, you'll be infusing 93 apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and studios. So people will be living, working and, you know, being in the downtown because that's where they live. So that is one reason why that project is so crucial. If you, earlier this year, I taught a class called Destination Marketing and several of our businesses came and sat in on a four week, they gave Tuesday nights for four weeks to be a part of the class. And the, the importance of that class is that you create your area as a destination. People have to go out of their way to make the decision to go and patronize your store or your business or your restaurant or whatever. And again, I think that people are really looking for more than just retail therapy. I mean, I'm, I'm someone who, when I'm really stressed out, I really love a little retail therapy, but I also kind of like want to be entertained. I want to do something. And I think like the Old Mill Properties is doing very good with that. They've got entertainment along with, you know, food and things like that. But I think that's a real key because people, especially in the last year, inflation has made them really decide where am I going to put my dollars? And food tends to still be something where people will put their money, but it's nice if they can get food and entertainment and, you know, kind of, it's an experience for them. And so creating downtown Bonner as a destination in a lot of ways is really important. We have a loosely based downtown business association that has come together in the last couple of years where we try and coordinate events, we try to get together, we try and, you know, kind of all be on the same page about these things. But it's hard. It's hard to ask people to give more time towards something, you know, when they're already putting the time into their business. A lot of businesses are, you know, some of them, this is their sole thing that they do, and some of them, it's kind of like something that they do, not as a side gig necessarily, but it's, you know, they do other things on, they do other things too, to make vans meet. And so it's hard. And I, I always tell people that it's not the city's job to necessarily make your cash register ring, that's your job, you know? But we're here to create a culture and environment that is conducive to business and that is helpful to your business so that, you know, we're creating events, we're making sure that, you know, people, that it's clean and that it's safe and things like that. That is our job, 100% to make sure that our downtowns are conducive for doing business. But I think that in the next two years, those apartments will make a big difference. I think that the Pavilion in Centennial Park has been very helpful. I tried to pull data specifically on Saturdays, but there wasn't enough data to pull for just Saturdays. So I think that the more things that you can have going on down there, the farmer's market, I didn't get a chance to ask Jack, but I'm 100% positive that after June 21st, when we opened the farmer's market officially in the new Pavilion, that more people came to the farmer's market after that date because of the visibility and the location of it. So, you know, that, that's a great complex or that's, that's a great area where multiple organizations have come together, the city, the library and the farmer's market are all working to make that a positive.
So I'll end with this. Do you think that common consumption helped a little bit as far as?
I do.
Bringing people in?
I, is she still here? I, I do. I think that, you know, I've had, especially with the Tap Room, I think they're the ones who probably benefited the most, but they also embraced it the most too. You know, they made sure that they had plastic cups that were, that were signed and they encouraged people to, they asked them, you know, do you, are you staying here? Do you want to walk around with it? And so I heard a lot of people say, oh yeah, I'd love to walk around with it and look at, you know, the shops or whatever, but I don't think we've had any issues with that. You know, our next big challenge is going to be, we don't have a lot of restaurants in downtown, but do we look at outdoor dining? How do we accomplish that? The Tap Room probably doesn't have as much of a need for that now that they're moving to a larger location. But, you know, if, again, if you look at any downtown that's successful, whether it be Lawrence or Lee Summit or some of those that come to mind, you know, people outside enjoying the public spaces is a key part. And I'll be really honest with you, consistency of hours, if I could wave my magic wand and say like, everybody open at this time, I would, but that's, it's, it's more of a challenge than you think. But consistency of hours, staying open, the times that you say you're going to be open, that's really important too.
Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Gillen, and appreciate the input and thank you very much. With that, we will now move on to citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. This is a opportunity for the citizens to address the mayor and the city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent government. Is there anyone who wishes to address the city council? Name an address, please.
My name is Kevin Zimmerly. I live at 13917 Stillwell Road, down Pastoreo Tracks. I've kind of changed what I kind of want to speak about a little bit, but one thing, question was just asked about downtown Bonner, which changed or whatever. The foot traffic is horrible and the reason is, is there's two reasons. One is there's too many vacant storefronts. There's two of them that have like cardboard or something covering all the windows. That looks horrible. That looks like trash on our downtown. That does not look good to have windows boarded up and everything. Another problem is we have too many businesses that don't, kind of like a preacher says, they don't put butts in the seats, or they're not open to the public really. So they're running a business, but nobody's coming downtown to see them. Then they leave here, let's walk to this next business. That's probably, that's most of what the problem is, is too many boarded up businesses and businesses that don't bring people in because they're not open to the public. Next I would like to address kind of the same thing on downtown is I asked about six, seven months ago of the city clerk about handicap parking on Oak Street. I and my wife own Karen's Country Kitchen, we have a lot of elderly people and they've told us, we have driven past you, kept on going because there was no parking right there by you. And so we're losing business, which is my problem, but I'm asking for help. Why can we not put handicap down Oak Street? Not every single parking spot, maybe like just one or two in each block. You know, that, that helped, I think everybody right then and there, it was told me that it has, I asked about actually about eight months ago, did not get an answer. I asked about two months ago and I was told they probably forgot about it. But now I've been told that they are looking into it. The city clerk told me today that it is being addressed and everything. Last thing is the trash, which everybody knows is horrible, we just, it's just discussed. My biggest complaint, and I think most people I've seen on Facebook, I saw the post you was talking about, where it said putting the trash on city property, people's getting upset. What upsets me is I can't get my money back for services not rendered. I, once a month, write a check to the city. I do not get services that is provided by the city because that's who I write my check to. I want my money back from the city because that's who I write my check to. I don't write to KCK, I don't write to Deafenball. If you try to get your money back from KCK, they transfer you and transfer you and transfer you. And the last time I was told, I was told, well, we think you have to come down here and fill out a piece of paper in person, you can't do it online, you have to come down here, but we're not sure where it's at. Nobody from the city is going to tell me exactly who to go to. That's wrong. I'm paying for a service and you can't even tell me to get my money back. I called Deafenball. Nope, sorry, we can't even talk to you. Called Bonner Springs. I said, oh, no, they say KCK takes care of it. This is completely wrong. And another problem is, with a service so bad, why can I not opt out and get my own trash service? I know it's an ordinance that is wrong telling people they have to take this service and pay for it. Plan it wrong, since you're not providing it, we should get our money back and we'll opt out. I don't need your trash service, just me and my wife. We have a little trash bag that big every week. Don't need it. And I know there's a lot of people in that same boat that wants to get out, but they can't because we're being forced to do this. So whatever you guys can do, people who's doing it right now is not doing a good job. I'll use today as an example, they picked up, they did pick up my trash and I could say they did pick up my recycling. Nobody on Stillwell got picked up for recycling except for us because they took our recycling and just threw it in with the regular trash. So Deafenball, or not Deafen, I'm sorry, Waste Man does not care about recycling and separating it. If they did, they would be throwing it away just trying to make it easier for the recycling people. This is 100% cardboard in a cardboard box and they just threw it away with the regular trash. So why should I recycle? They don't care. So I hate to kind of say eat and run, but I have to go to work at 4:00 in the morning. So I apologize for not staying, but 4:00 was very early.
Well, appreciate the comments, Mr. Zimmerly. I will discuss with staff then this week about some of the issues you brought forward as far as, I know refund's going to be an issue. Unfortunately, we get billed from the UG, so if we don't bill you, the other residents have to pay for it. That's the problem. But we're going to look into some ways, maybe work with the UG to see if there's a way we can streamline that process for, for those who are constantly repeatedly getting missed. I don't know if that could happen or not, but we're going to try. And then also, I like the idea of the potential for handicap parking. I will talk to staff about that as well.
Yeah, it's been going for quite a while and I apologize to city clerk, I was getting kind of upset. I was like, I don't see what, what takes so long? This is not a state highway, it's a Bonner Springs city street. What takes so long to put a handicap placard up there? I know there is rules and stuff, but months and months and months, I think it's kind of excessive myself, but I don't know how to do their job. So if you, if you guys will look and see what can be done, I really would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Zimmerly, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the October 28th city council meeting, claims for city operations, license renewal for the massage therapy business establishment and massage therapist license for Nicole Wee with Spa Rafa, third quarter financial reports, the intergovernment service agreement to offer, to offer combined senior center trip opportunities in 2025, the FTA DOT drug and alcohol policy for Thibault Transit, and then KDOT employee assistance program policy for Thibault Transit. Does staff wish to have anything polled? Is there anyone from the citizens who'd like to have anything polled? Council? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Blanks. Vote please.
Running a motion to approve the consent agenda. Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Stevens? Oh, sorry, Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to new business. We have FP 0324, the replat of Track A of Deerfield Village for the Bonner Springs Senior Villas. Staff?
Sorry, I don't have much hair, but I have a hair in my glasses. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we're here to, for you guys to accept dedication of right-of-way and public easements for the final or the replat of Track A of Deerfield Village. There is representatives here if you guys have any questions of them, but this was at a, would they like to address it all or, this wasn't a, this was not a public hearing? No, because it was already platted and everything. Basically what they did, what they did was they took that one large track and divided it in half. They're saving the, the other half possibly for a second phase, but that was, that was what they did effectively was divide that lot in half.
If they'd like to address this, they can. Otherwise, I would go ahead and open it up for any residents that would like to speak.
It's up to you guys.
Okay. If there's no residents, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements shown for the Bonner Springs Senior Center Villas Platte.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Wood. We'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon. Any comments, questions?
No comments.
No comments.
I have none.
No questions, thanks, Mark.
No questions, thank you.
Nothing here, thank you. I can't believe nobody asked, do we have a date on when we're hoping to start deploying equipment on site?
We've got a few, few more things still to knock out, but they're heading down right at.
Okay. If there's no more comments or questions, I would go ahead and ask for a vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. On to item number two, the resolution to amend the development agreement for the Sandstone Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, RHID. Staff?
Good evening, council. Amber Vogon, interim city manager. The developer has requested that this be tabled to the December 16th meeting to allow a little bit more time for them to go over the development agreement and work a couple of details out.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the citizens who'd like to address, speak on this item? If not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this till the 16th of December.
Second.
Okay, no discussion because it's been tabled, so.
They want it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Wood, and we'll call for the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number three, notice of a public hearing for the 2024 budget amendments. Staff?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tilly Lopant, finance director. This agenda item is to approve the public hearing notice for 2024 budget amendments and to schedule a public hearing for Monday, November 25th. All of these amendments have been discussed during the budget sessions. The only change, and this was approved by the council, I think a couple meetings ago, was moving a police vehicle from 2025 to 2024 to purchase that early. Everything else is the same as what was discussed during the budget hearings. Capital improvement, sales tax change was because of the delay in the 138th Street project. The emergency services sales tax was to purchase an ambulance, a server or an upgrade, and then that police vehicle, the Streets project. We had originally thought we were going to get $150,000 in sci-fi when we did the original budget and we ended up getting, we're getting close to $500,000 that we're spending on those sidewalks. And then the senior center with the increased trips, we just needed, we're getting more income, we just needed the budget authority to spend that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anybody, any of the residents who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the public hearing notice and schedule a public hearing for the 2024 budget amendments for Monday, November 24th, 25th, excuse me, 2024.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Blanks, and we'll start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
No, nothing here.
No questions, Tilly, thank you.
No questions, thanks for your work on this.
No questions. No questions because you answered them all.
Yeah. Thanks, Tilly, you've done a good job.
Quiet group tonight, so thank you very much. We'll go ahead and call for the vote then.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that takes us on to our reports. We'll start with the city major's report.
I just have a couple of things. Public Works reported to me today that they are down to 188 on the water softness and they're adjusting each day to get to their 150 target, so we are very close on that. The fire department and police department food drive, the cram the cruiser and bus event was very successful. I saw a picture of a, of an office just lined with items that they collected, so that's great, and I'll also have that in the next report. And then I wanted to make sure that you are aware of the annual staff holiday gathering will be Friday, December 20th from 3:00 to 4:30 PM and will close offices for that time. That's all I have.
We'll go ahead and then move on to council items and we'll start with you, Mr. Mac Mahan.
I'm tonight.
Okay, Ms. Wood?
I'm just so glad we have such a great staff.
Mr. Shannon?
The resolution that Chris sent out, I had some, some concerns about it. I'm not sure the way I read it, are, do they want us a yes vote to support it or a no vote to, if we don't do anything, does that mean it's a yes or if we say no?
So the email that went out today was a notification that we received that the cornerstone apartments were pulling bonds for their funding under their application that they've submitted for low-income housing tax credits. They were in a non-competitive application, so they did not need a resolution of support from us. So the email that went out today was a notification that we received that the cornerstone apartments were pulling bonds for their funding under their application that they've submitted for low-income housing tax credits. They were in a non-competitive application, so they did not need a resolution of support from us, and that is why we got the, the notice of them being issued bonds. So if we take no action, they'll get their funding, it'll go through. If you choose to pass a resolution opposing the funding, then we would forward that on to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation and notify them of.
Well, this is a kind of an awkward situation, but I felt one that I've felt that I needed to address. I do want to preface everything that I'm going to say, that I am not against low, affordable, moderate apartments, you know, I'm not, I'm not against that. What I'm concerned about is that our housing needs, in our 2022 Bonner Springs Housing Needs Analysis for seniors over the age of 65, and this is, what I'm prefacing everything is, is on the age of 65. I am not against them on what they're trying to do or anything at all. I want that definitely on record. At the present time, according to the 2022 Housing Needs Report, the market rate apartments that we have for seniors over the age of 65 were 82. Income restricted apartments for seniors, this is all for seniors over the age of 65, there were 202. For senior housing, which is your KC Housing Authority apartments, there's 138. The totals on this, the market rate are 82, and that's, they said it's approximately 19% of our population. The in, income restricted and senior housing is totaling the 202 and 138 comes to 308, which runs our totals for 82 market rate apartments and 340 income restricted and senior housing. And again, I want us to be aware that why I'm saying this is because we are, we are not looking at our seniors that are in our town that are above the income limits, and I think we need to be cautious, and I will, you know, convey that in a later thing, but I want you to be aware of where I'm going. Affordable housing apartments to be built, okay? Bonner Villas, there's approximately 96 apartments, and that's the ones at 132nd and Kansas Avenue. The Oak Street Apartments, that's the ones that I believe it's a 50/50. There's approximately, and I believe that Megan mentioned that there was 93. I had it at 50. So these are, these are approximate, they're close, but don't, don't hold me to the exact number. It can, it can vary a couple of apartments. Oak Street is 50 apartments. There's a total of 146 apartments for the Bonner Villa and the Oak Street that are affordable housing. The market rates apartment to be built are the ones on Oak Street where they have a 50 apartments, as I understand it, that are market rate. Preferred, proposed affordable housing to be built are the cornerstone apartments. Those are 202. The totals for the entire market and affordable housing to be built, existing and proposed, the affordable senior and income restricted apartments, when you total all these together, come to 686. The market rate apartments come to 102. Again, those of our senior citizens that are in this town, there are only 102 apartments available to them. Those that for affordable housing and senior and income restricted are 686. Again, as I said at the beginning, I am not against affordable housing, I'm not against it. I am for creating an equal, as best as possible, for our families. Our age demographics in 2020, when the census was taken, 19% of our population was over the, the age of 65. Now that percentage has risen both in population and both in senior citizens. Traffic studies, although this is a little premature, but in 2019 in KDOT, there were over 20,000 cars and trucks a day at K7 and Kansas Avenue, and adding the proposed 202 apartments would be interesting. At present, there's only two exits onto Kansas Avenue, which would load up an already wonderful traffic jam that we have already. That does not, I did not include the, the Villas that are also right adjacent to Kansas Avenue. But as I said, I'm not trying to dump on them, I just want to present some interesting facts. The sewers, according to Matt Beetz of the Public Works Department, which I've talked with twice and I talked to personally tonight, our sewer line is nearing capacity on the south side of K7, which these 202 apartments, as well as the Bonner Villas apartments, moving forward, questions would arise. The conclusions at this point, so that I can try to draw it all together for you, is our 2020 census noted that age 65 accounted for 19% of our population in Bonner Springs. By 2030, our population is forecast to increase by 22.8%. The Bonner Springs Housing Needs Analysis stated, and I quote, "Over the coming decade, Bonner Springs senior population is forecast, forecast to increase by nearly 23%, creating an increased demand for both affordable rental and attached-for-sale housing such as garden homes, townhomes, and condominiums." Allow our senior citizens to age in place because there are so many that want to stay in Bonner. But right now, as I pointed out earlier, there's approximately, well, never mind, it's, it's low. And we need to create, or recommending to create, a rate housing for seniors who are above the affordable rates so that they can stay in Bonner. I realize that it's very hard for a lot of people to be where I'm at. I'm a senior citizen, and I can't, I can't look at somebody 92 and say, hey, I know what it feels like to be 92, I know what you're going through. No more than, our younger generation can look forward, they can look back and advise to, to the younger generation what not to do, what to watch out for, et cetera. I realize that we have a lot of people, not only in Bonner, but everywhere, that need affordable housing. I get that. But I think we need to be cautious because we are now at a point, as I said, where we have 686 affordable housing, proposed, existing, and to be built affordable housing, and we only have 102 at market rate. We are now excluding many of our seniors. I'm not saying that all the 19% or 20% are at a particular rate, but when you have a $40,000 cap on affordable housing, and I'm, I'm using 40 as a figure, it could be a little lower, it could be a little higher. I do know that there's a lot of people in our town that make less than 25,000, and my heart aches for them because I'm thinking, that's tough. But I also say that we have our seniors in this town that have been here, raised their children, and have, want, want to stay, and we're not, we're not putting an opportunity out there for them to be and continue to be a part of Bonner Springs. And at this point, I respectfully request that we discuss this in entirety so that we can take a look and see how we can balance this. I don't have an answer. I know that the construction industry and the builders know that there's more money to be built in apartments than there is in garden villas, but I also feel that there can also be apartments for seniors at market rate. And I do not, honestly, I do not want this to become the affordable city of Western Wyandotte County. And I say this out of all due respect, because I know that this is a very, for me, it's a very, very cautious balance that I walk on this because I don't want anybody thinking that, oh gee, Roger's against this. No, I'm saying, let's build something for our seniors too, and don't forget them. Thanks for your time.
Before I go on, I'll, I'll just mention to you, Roger, yeah, basically what will the letter entail was just, do we want to do a resolution, you know, disagreeing with them, you know, getting potentially the grant money? Talking to staff, we're going to see if, if there's consensus among council to do a special meeting next week, so that way we have time to poss, you know, to properly public notice it, as well as invite the, the developers of the project to be able to attend as well. So if the council would like to, we'd go ahead and create a special meeting for next week, and then we can have this discussion and then make a determination if we want to allow that Lytech funding to go through, or if we wish to have a letter of disagreement with that.
I'm, I'm.
Okay. Does the council would like to have a special meeting next week? Is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and get one scheduled for next week.
Oh.
Actually, we're not in public comment at this point in time. This is strictly council items, so, but you will have an opportunity to speak if we have a special meeting, watch for other notices, and you will, there will be a public portion in that, then you'll be allowed to speak. Okay, on to you, Ms. Blanks.
Do they have anything?
Yes, I started here and went that direction.
I just, I know Veterans Day was yesterday, and we have some great veterans that serve in our community, our school district, and of course residents, so thank you for serving. And thank you to, I was out of town this weekend, but thank you to the police department for another successful cram the cruiser event. We appreciate all the cram the cruiser events you do throughout the year, so thank you. As Megan noted, the downtown shops holiday open house is this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. If you're on my chamber email, I sent out a full breakdown of the schedule, so we do encourage you to pass that information along to family, friends, and other community members for them to be able to enjoy our downtown. And thank you to our Public Works for, one of the requests that we had was to get lighting up around the community before that, so they worked really hard to make that happen. It was literally Halloween and then it was Christmas the next day, so thank you for timing that so perfectly, we do appreciate it. Edwardsville is hosting a blood drive next Friday, the 22nd, from 10 to 2, so they just think about doing that. And then Von Trent, we are still collecting items for our Christmas baskets. Any and all items are welcomed, and you can drop those off if you can't make it during business hours at Von Trent. Third Space, 10 and 2, the library, UBT, and Mutual Savings are all collecting those, so just consider dropping by that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
I think Emily's covered everything, but I did want to circle back around to Megan's presentation and just say an additional thank you because I know how hard you work on everything that happens in the community, and having been part of a few of those events, it's extra hard, especially when people either don't come or, you know, the word doesn't get out right, and finding that perfect balance is really difficult, so thank you for everything that you do, and we're really lucky to have you here in our community. Thanks.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes. Attended the parade in Leavenworth for our veterans, was very happy to see our fire department showed up for that. It showed up really well, what a, what a wonderful piece of equipment that we took up there, that really showed everybody else that we're, we're up to date. Couple other items, this last year I was informed that the, some of the work that we're going to be doing on our water lines, for instance, looping waterline on Thibault Lane, and I know there's another one, this, two that's supposed to be done, I really, really need to get those done or scheduled. I think they are proposed to be this next year in 2025, so I'd like to make sure those are going to happen. And then also, don't forget about Spring Creek, what we need to be do, start relining that creek with a better graded rock than what's there now. Other than that, happy to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I have just two things. One, I did receive an email late last week that kind of, kind of was a little bit deflating. It was from the health department, and no, it's not about me personally, some of you may applaud, I don't. But no, the, the numbers, even though I think there is a need here, the, the clinic that the health department has been bringing out to our location here twice a month, has, they've been struggling getting individuals to show up and utilize their services. So starting in January, they're going to cut back to one day a month for three months, and then they're going to take a look at it again. If it continues, if they're not able to get the numbers up, not that they're going to completely abandon us, but it will be go to a, an appointment system where if they have, anybody calls and makes an appointment, then they will come out here and staff, and come out here and, and provide their services. So I don't know if we potentially can maybe work a little harder to get the word out. I still, like I said, I think there is the need here, but unfortunately, people are just not taking advantage of it, so just want to make sure you're aware of that. And I'm glad the fire chief is still here today. He stopped by and presented me with a little bit of, a little bit of a plaque, and I want to claim, and he may not agree with me, but I'll claim that he made me an honorary firefighter, so I want to know where I sign up for KPNF at, but, so. He also presented challenge coins, and he presented a challenge coin, if you want to slide one down there to Roger, for each one of the council members as well. If you want to pass that now. So we all have our challenge coin from the fire department. Thank you very much, Chief. And with, if anything else, we are going to continue our workshop after we adjourn our regular meeting. If there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Being here in the chair, the ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Stick around for a little.